Good evening. Would everyone please rise for the regular monthly board meeting and rise to the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for what has been another largely successful school year, and we are grateful for the hard work and dedication of our employees and the efforts of our students during the past nine months. We are thankful too for the support of our parents in this community as we work in partnership to provide excellence in education for our young people. As summer vacation begins, we ask that you keep our students and employees safe and return them to us renewed and rested as the new school year begins in just nine and a half short weeks. These things we pray in your name, realizing that the things we are able to do successfully are because of your grace and guidance. Amen.
Mr. Kosha, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votche.
Mrs. Aceveda here. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Dr. Kraft. Mr. Egan. Mrs. Lemoine is at our community college graduation tonight. Mr. England. Mrs. Dysart.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mrs. Kosha.
Here.
And Mr. Warner.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. First item on the agenda tonight is the public hearing on the 2016-2017 general fund and the special revenue funds budget. Is anyone signed up to speak on the budget tonight?
Okay, Mr. Fernandez, no one is here to speak, so this would cover us for our public hearing at this time that was discussed at our committee meeting. Okay, next item on the agenda are community concerns.
Ms. Benazak, did anyone sign up?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to take a point of privilege to introduce three of our audience members. They are Addison Gagnard, Emery Gagnard, and Charlotte Gagnard. And these three children, or my grandchildren, and they've been asking to come to a school board meeting, so I thought tonight would be appropriate since they don't have homework tonight. Actually, Charlotte is going to graduate from kindergarten tomorrow, and of course, this is the last week of school. Girls, would y'all stand up, please, and say hello?
Hi.
They are all students at La Caste. As I said, Charlotte's graduating from kindergarten, Emery tomorrow, Emery's in first, and Addison is in third grade. And I would like to take this opportunity, welcome, girls, and glad you got to come. And I'd like to take this opportunity on behalf of the school board to congratulate all of the kindergarten graduates who will be graduating tomorrow, all of the eighth grade graduates who will be graduating from our middle schools, and all of our Sherman High School seniors who graduated in fifth grade, I'm sorry, in the fifth grade who will be graduating from the middle schools, and all of our seniors who graduated from Sherman High School. And just to let the audience know and to also, just to congratulate all of them, Sherman High School seniors earned over $10 million worth of scholarships, which is a tremendous feat. So congratulations to them and their parents. And of course, to our wonderful administration and faculty and staff who helped them get there. So congratulations to all the graduates this year. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the result of the special election held in school district number one of the parish of St. Bernard, state of Louisiana, on Saturday, April 9, 2016, to authorize the levy of a special tax therein. Okay, I guess we need a joint acclamation to...
Maybe you should read the resolution and then do a joint acclamation. And this may be one where you have to take a roll call, maybe, you know?
Okay. The resolution reads as such: Following resolution was offered tonight and seconded tonight, providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the result of the special election held in school district number one of the parish of St. Bernard, state of Louisiana, on Saturday 9, 2016, to authorize the levy of a special tax therein. Be it resolved by the St. Bernard Parish School Board or the parish of St. Bernard, state of Louisiana, the governing authority, acting as the governing authority of school district number one of the parish of St. Bernard, state of Louisiana, the district, that section one canvass, this governing authority does now proceed in open and public session to examine the official tabulations of votes cast at the special election held in school district one of the parish of St. Bernard, state of Louisiana, on Saturday, April 9, 2016, to authorize the levy of a special tax therein, and said governing authority does further proceed to examine and canvass the returns and declare the result of the election, special election. Section two, the canvass of the returns of said election shall be made and certified copy thereof shall be forwarded to the Secretary of State, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, who shall record the same in his office. Another certified copy thereof shall be forwarded to the clerk of court and ex officio recorder of mortgages in and for the parish of St. Bernard, who shall record the same in the mortgage records of said parish, and another copy thereof shall be retained in the archives of this governing authority. Section three, promulgation of election result, the result of said election shall be promulgated by publication in the manner provided by law. This resolution has been submitted to a vote. The vote thereon will be as follows, yeas, nays, no one's absent, and the resolution was declared upon this 24th day of May, 2016. Do I hear... We don't have to put in the minutes of the results.
We don't have to read it, no.
No.
Okay.
And they have all the results attached per precinct and the vote tabulation for and against. Okay, Dr. Kraft makes the motion. Mr. Campbell seconds the motion. Any discussion on the motion? I would just like to say thank you to the public. I know, you know, in prior committee meetings, several board members have thanked the public for their trust, and we do appreciate their vote for this resolution for the school district of St. Bernard Parish. Ms. Votche, do you want to add anything?
Again, thanks to the public for having the confidence in us to pass this and realizing, as we've said before and as you've mentioned before, Ms. Dysart, that this will not mean an increase in taxes. It will be the same amount of taxes that have been paid to the school system in the last year and again this year. It's just we're going to divert a debt service millage and rededicate it to the maintenance of our school buildings. And we waited 11 years after the storm to do this, knowing that that debt service would roll off so that we would not ask the people to pay additional monies, but just to rededicate an existing tax. So just to make sure, make it clear, that it will not be an increase to the taxpayers for next year. It'll be the same number of mills that we will be applying, that we have always applied.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Anyone else on this issue? Dr. Kraft?
Yes. This millage will allow us to take these already nice schools and keep them up, keep them repaired, and maintain in the way that people in the community can be proud without any additional funds allocated for this. So we express our genuine thanks for this.
Anyone else?
That's it.
Okay, so let's have a roll call vote, Ms. Votche, on this issue.
Mrs. Aceveda?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. England?
Four.
Mrs. Dysart?
Four.
Dr. Lewis?
Four.
Mr. Long?
Four.
Mrs. Kosha?
Four.
Mr. Warner?
Four.
Ten-four, no opposed. And one absent.
Oh, Ms. Lemoine is... Okay. So that... So the resolution will read, Ms. Lemoine is absent and yes, ten-four. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votche. Next item is a recognition of receipt of the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Board officials' awards for excellence in financial reporting. And if Mr. Fernandez would come forward, please. Good evening, Mr. Fernandez. Mr. Fernandez, we appreciate all of your hard work, and just to recognize you, all of your staff, administration, Ms. Votche, we truly appreciate all of your hard work. And this is a certificate... The certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to St. Bernard Parish School Board by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. This is an award of financial reporting, and it's been awarded to the individual department or agency designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CFFOR, CAFOR, and this has been presented to the Department of Business Services in St. Bernard Parish School District. The CAFOR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including the demonstration of a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and users groups to read the CAFOR. The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately 17,500 government finance professionals with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington, D.C. And tonight, the certificate of excellence in financial reporting award is presented to the St. Bernard Parish School Board for its comprehensive annual financial report, and it's been reviewed, met, and exceeded the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence Standards. So we would like to acknowledge this award and read it as such. The certificate of excellence in financial reporting is presented to the St. Bernard Parish School Board for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2015. So, Mr. Fernandez, if you would please come up and accept this on our behalf and how much all the work you do for us. Thank you for all your...
You're giving both of them.
Yeah.
A lot of work.
And this other one is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for its comprehensive annual financial report from the executive director. Thank you very much, Mr. Fernandez, and Ms. Votche, and all of your staff.
Speech.
Speech.
Not that you're counting. Twenty-two years in a row.
That's fantastic.
That is. And, Mr. Fernandez, I know I ask this every year because it's not a large number of governmental bodies that receive this award. Do you know the number this year?
School systems, I really don't know. All governments participate in the GFOA award and school systems in the ASBO award nationwide, but it's not a whole lot. I don't know an exact number, to tell you the truth, but not too many people take the time to apply and...
So it's a slim number.
Yes, ma'am.
Granted this award.
Yes.
Well, we thank you again for all of your diligence, your hard work, and to you and your staff, Ms. Votche and the administration. Do you want to say anything, Ms. Votche?
I think we're very fortunate to have Mr. Fernandez in spearheading this particular effort. He does a phenomenal job all year long, as well as the people who work with him in business services. And with the hundreds of millions of dollars that have come through our school system, especially in the last 10 years, it's really phenomenal that we have been able to do it, really with the existing staff that we have, and it really is through David's leadership and determination and hard work that it's made possible. These particular awards are for financial reporting, and when you look at our CAFER, you know, which is this thick, and you get the report from our auditors on its accuracy, they... We are one of the few school systems or really governmental entities that produces that document totally on our own, where the auditors come in and just really can audit. And that's one of the reasons the costs of our audits are so, I guess, small in comparison to the cost of other governmental bodies, because in many cases, when their auditors come in, the first thing they have to do is compile a lot of that data and really produce some of the comprehensive reports that we've got within our CAFER. So they look at it as we are an easy entity to come in and audit because it's all right there for them. So I just want to, you know, congratulate David and the members of the business services, as well as, you know, they work very hard on the document, making sure all the source documentation is there. But it goes beyond that to our program people and our schools, because all of these funds that come in at the school level and that come in through the programs that our educational people supervise, they sometimes don't always understand the need for the documentation that we have to have them provide, but it is really essential to producing the kinds of audit reports that we can do because we do have that culture in place. So it's a cooperative effort of everyone, system-wide, but spearheaded by, you know, Mr. Fernandez and his crew. So we do appreciate them and thank them for keeping us out of trouble.
Thanks again, Mr. Fernandez. Okay, thank you, Ms. Votche. Next item on the agenda is a motion to incorporate the May 10, 2016, general committee meeting into the minutes of the May regular monthly meeting. There's a motion by Mr. Warner.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kosha. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Okay, motion passes, ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the following minutes, the minutes of the regular monthly meeting of March 22, 2016, as published on May 20, 2016. Okay, there's a motion by Dr. Lewis. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Aceveda. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the changes to the guide to student conduct for the 2016-2017 school year. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Dr. Kraft. Seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are personnel changes from May 2016. Good evening, Mr. Granberry.
Good evening, good evening. We have few changes, not many, on page two. The next thing is what made us really busy. That's the whole appointment's coming.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Granberry. We appreciate it.
I'm staying.
Oh, you are staying.
I'm staying for a little while.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the 2016-2017 Personnel Evaluation Plan. There was a recommendation from the committee.
You skipped the appointment.
Oh, I sure did. I'm sorry.
Okay.
2016-2017 personnel appointments.
That is a list of everybody who will be working for us in the 2016-17 school year at this time, with a few additions to be made, but we're in really good shape as far as for teachers for next year. We have some openings, but not many at all.
So the job fair was very successful, huh?
Everything, transfer day, job fair, we did really well, you know, so...
Great. Okay, are there any questions? And we do not need a vote on this?
No.
Okay. Next item on the agenda now is the motion to approve the 2016-2017 Personnel Evaluation Plan.
And there was no recommendation to change that at this time. If any changes are needed in the future, we'll make them and bring them to the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Is there a motion on the floor at this time? Motion by Mr. Campbell? Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Kosha. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Next item is a motion to approve the request for permission to mail letters of assurance. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Dr. Kraft? Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Long? Mr. England?
Yeah, I have a question on it right here. Because of Act One, you know, I think this would be a information purposes only, because here we are, we cannot hire or fire anybody, and here we are giving assurance of letters to employees. Am I correct, or...
This is ensuring substitutes that they have an opportunity to come back to work for us next year, you know? But they're not actually appointed employees, they're just substitutes.
Just substitutes.
Right. Anyone who works for us as a substitute during the school year in one way or another gets a copy of this letter.
Well, I understand that, but my question, because of Act One, we cannot hire...
Your point is well taken. This is an assurance to people that are... Who are substitutes, and this is so that they cannot say that we release them and have unemployment benefits and those types of things. So we're just mailing them a letter of assurance, telling them that we intend to continue that substitute relationship with them next year, but I'm sure we could just send it out without your approval, if that's what you're talking about.
That's what I'm talking about, right? Because Act One...
So I'm sure we could do it for informational purposes as well, you know? You also vote on it as well. Why don't we just do it to make sure? It wouldn't hurt to do it, you know? But your point is well taken. I'm not sure if we really have to.
Right.
I know Act One, like Mr. Granberry says, covers employees, and these people aren't considered like under Act One appointments made for teachers or full-time employees. These are subs. So maybe we need to just do it, just in case.
Just in case.
How's that?
That's fine.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or any questions?
It can't hurt.
I know it can't hurt, but it's just...
Okay. Okay, we had a motion and we had a second on this item, so please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Appreciate it. Okay, next item is a motion to approve the administration's request to renew flood insurance. There was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Dr. Lewis?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? We have Mr. Clemens with us tonight, if there's any question, if there were any questions. And Mr. Holton. There being none? Thank you for being with us tonight. Okay, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the 2016-2017 General Fund and Special Revenue Funds Budget, and there was a recommendation by the committee. Is there a motion? Motion by Dr. Kraft? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Campbell. And earlier tonight, we had a special hearing, a public hearing, rather, on the budget. Is there any discussion or any questions on the budget at this time? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the bid tabulation on used buses. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Mr. Warner?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Kraft. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Next item is a motion to approve the bid tabulation for spices, seasonings, class two, cereal, dried beans, and crackers, class three, frozen foods, class five, meat, meat products, class six, poultry and eggs, class seven, seafood products, class eight, canned goods, class nine, for the period of July 1, 2016 through December 31, 2016. There was a recommendation from the committee. Motion by Mr. Egan, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion on the motion? They were all lowest bids, okay? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Next item is a motion to approve the bid tabulation for milk and milk products for July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. There was a recommendation from the committee. There's a motion by Ms. Aceveda, seconded by Ms. Kosha. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the bid tabulation for bread and bread products for July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. There was a recommendation from the committee. Don't hear a motion. Motion by Mr. Warner? Seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom, for being with us tonight. Okay, next item is a motion to approve the Head Start request for expenditure of cola increase. There was a recommendation from the committee. There's a motion by Dr. Lewis, seconded by Dr. Kraft. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, ten-zero.
Thank you. Next item, items to be placed on the agenda of the next committee meeting. Does anyone have any? At this time? If not, you have time before the next committee meeting to add any items to the agenda. Okay, superintendent's recommendation.
Just included in your folder, Mr. Warner had requested that we give you the updated student counts for this year, so I put the enrollment counts, a copy of them, in your folders by school and grade levels, pre-K, K-5, middle school and high school, so you have those provided for you. A reminder that Thursday, like Ms. Dysart was saying, tomorrow we have the kindergarten and fifth grade and eighth grade exit ceremony. and fifth grade and eighth grade exit ceremonies. Thursday is the last day for our students, and Friday is Records Day, where the students are off, and it's the last day for our teachers. We start up again next Wednesday with our summer skills session and all of the professional development and workshops and programs that we had talked about before, so we don't have too much of a break, I think two days, without the students with us, you know, this coming Monday and Tuesday. But we intend to have a very, very busy summer. There's a lot of celebrations and ceremonies at the school sites that we would ask you check with your child's school for everything that will happen in the next three days, and we've had a very successful school year, so we're pleased with the 2015-16 school year and are already planning and looking forward to when our students come back in August, so.
And what's the date of the first day?
I think the students come back on the 9th of August, the teachers come back the week before. Yeah, it gets earlier and earlier every year.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Well, on behalf of the board, congratulations again to all the graduates, and happy summer to all our students and teachers. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Aceveda. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. The meeting's now adjourned, thank you and good night.